I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, folks.
I'd like to, first of all, introduce the panel, who's up there in front, Larry Verga, who's the Sutter Buttes Tea Party Vice Chairman and retired California Data Center Manager, Larry Verga. Daniel Thordin, who is a manager of Shooter's Paradise here in town, big supporter of the Tea Party and agenda 21 radio. Thomas Burns, Sutter Buttes Tea Party Executive Committee Owner of Thomas Burns Plastering, Thomas. Anyway, so let's go ahead, candidates will be participating and we'll share their views with you. The people are Marysville Mayor Rick Samioa, did I say it right? Really? You get my vote. Christopher Pedogic? Penny Goode? Listen, I gotta tell ya, I've had your relatives as a teacher many years, so I should know that. Well, actually, I got one, I'll vote for you two. I'll vote early and often for both of you. Marysville City Council David Hobbs, David. Stephanie McKenzie. There you go. Charles Knott. And Valerie Tootie, is that right, or Toodle, sorry. Toodle? Is that an I? It's an L, alright, alright. Anyway, let me go ahead and introduce the other people that are responsible for tonight. The timekeeper is Mike Drollow. He will hold up three signs when appropriate, thirty seconds, ten seconds, and that's all, folks. I will call on each candidate and they will give a two-minute introduction about themselves and their respective campaigns. The order will be seating, will be by seating at the table left to right. There will be questions of the candidate's debate committee and the audience that's present. The panel will ask questions of specific candidates, a few questions will be asked of all candidates. Participating candidates will have one minute to respond, and if a candidate is mentioned or implied in a question or answer, they will be allowed thirty seconds for a rebuttal. And Mike over here has the thirty-second button. After the panel's questions, we will conclude with a two-minute closing statement, and please hold until that. Okay, are you guys ready to start? Alright, we're gonna start from left to right, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening and thank you to the Sutter Buttes Tea Party for this opportunity to, for us to be able to provide information about ourselves and our campaign and where we stand on different issues. Have a bit of a stuffy note, so I apologize if you can't hear me well. About me, I am a family man. My wife and I have a twenty-one, a seventeen, and a five-year-old little boy, kindergarten. Which just totally changed my life, the five-year-old. My wife, previous marriage, she had her twenty-one and seventeen-year-old, but I love them, like my daughters, of course. But my five-year-old has definitely changed my perspective on how I see what's important in life. So they definitely keep me focused on what's important. I am a homeowner in the city of Marysville. I just happen to live across the street from Kaidon, which is where my little man goes, and I get to walk him every day and see him kinda start his educational life. I am, and to me, really to me, where I live, my community, my neighborhoods, is my focus. And it's always been my focus since I became a council member in 2010. I dedicated to provide ideas and policies and direction towards making our neighborhoods strong and healthy. And what does that mean? By the main thing, public safety has to be strong, our police and our fire departments has to be staffed accordingly and they have to be well-equipped. Of course amenities like parks and streets are truly important. So those are my focus, they'll continue to be my focus, and that's all, folks.
Good evening, I'm Councilman Chris Bagel. I've lived in the city of Marysville for six years now. I've been on the Marysville City Council four years in November. I've worked hard, I live in the city, I love my city. It's the best little, small city in the world. You know, I don't have children, I have nieces and nephews I help take care of. And they are my pride and joy. And my idea of public service is changing the way the city runs. Yes, we have made a U-turn. And we've been part of a team that's helped change the face of the city. But it's my vision, I wanna take the city to the next level. It's time to make the city a free enterprise zone, and we have made some strides and some changes as far as streamlining goes. We must take this city to the next level, and the thing we must do is look at making it more business-friendly. Whether it's through streamlining, easier than you business. The city is struggling, and now it's time to take it to the next level. And that's what I plan on doing as the next mayor of the city of Marysville.
Thank you, next.
My name's McKenzie, and thank you for having us here tonight, to get to see your faces again. I have lived in this area for about thirty-five years now. The last three and a half have been actually in downtown Marysville. I have the privilege of living on the historic property of the Forbes House, and so I love being on D Street. I'm right downtown for all the excitement that happens down there, and I loved it, and I love the city. I never imagined I would live in Marysville because, I was in high school, I swore I would never live here. Because it was, somebody scared us when we'd come up for football games, I was the cheerleader, and they said, "Don't go in the dark, something gang is gonna get you." So I thought it had to be the worst place in the world, but now I just love it. And so I'm happy to be here, and I'm just really privileged to be running for council member and because I believe that there's hope for Marysville. I believe that there's a lot of, a lot of local people, and even people who don't live in the city, who love the city, who would like to see it change, and I think that we can do some smart things. Having a plan, having a strategic plan, looking at how we're managing our resources, like the police department, like the management of the parks, there's probably different ways that we can manage those things that would be more cost-effective and have money for things that have been lacking. Some of my background, I'm not married now, but I raised four children, I have thirteen grandchildren, and I worked at Fremont-Biden Hospital for probably about ten years as a ward secretary. I was a hospice chaplain for several years, and I'm now a teacher. I teach kindergarten out at Ella Elementary School. So I've been, a lot of my experience has been in education, homeschooling my own children and working the construction. So that's me, and I look forward to answering your questions.
Thank you.
Next.
Thank you to the Sutter Buttes Tea Party for having us here tonight. My name's Charles Knott, I'm a Marysville native, I grew up there, lived there until nineteen eighty, when I went in the Navy, came home in eighty-three. Lived and worked in Marysville and New City up until ninety-one, when I left. I came back twenty years later, in two thousand eleven, and brought my wife with me and her son. And shortly after we moved back, we started a volunteer group, and we took care of the Verfront Park area, boat launch facility, for approximately three and a half years. We were instrumental on getting the marina dug out. We do a lot of community projects. Being from Marysville for all these years, I've seen Marysville at its height, and I've seen how she's slipped away, and it's time we gotta get in, we gotta get business-friendly, we gotta get the town cleaned up. There's a lot of small steps we can do to accomplish this. The biggest thing is, we have to get the citizens of Marysville behind our way of thinking. And so that way, everybody knows where we're coming from and what the end point is. We just have to streamline everything out, make sure we have a safe city, a clean city, and get our historic history back. Marysville has a lot to offer historically, and we need to play on that, you know? That is one of the things that we need to do. And once again, thank you to the Sutter Buttes Tea Party for having us tonight, thank you.
Thank you, next.
My name is... My name is David Hobbs, and thank you all for being here tonight. I've lived in Marysville, well, I first came here in nineteen seventy-four, and I've lived here pretty much ever since. And I was here, I saw the last great transformation of Marysville, when they cleaned out a lot of the lower end, they put in the bourbon store, they put in the nice streets there on D Street and C Street. And I know what it was like before that, and I know what that change did, it really changed the city. But since then, it's, nothing much has happened. We've got about a thirty-three percent vacancy rate in businesses downtown. The city of Marysville is known to be unfriendly to business, in fact, I've heard about that all my life. I ran a business, my own painting business, for about twenty-two, twenty-five years. And so I know what a business needs, and we've heard so many stories about people that have wanted to bring a business into Marysville. They've found a good location, they've talked to the owner, they were sent to sign the lease, they called the city and said, "We wanna lease this particular property here, is there anything we have to do? Is it in compliance?" "Oh yeah, it's in compliance, it's fine." So they went ahead and signed the lease, and then the city said, "Well, no, actually, that's not good, that's not good. It costs two thousand dollars to, before you can open the doors." That's the kind of thing, and there's a lot more, and we'll get into that later, thank you.
Thank you, Valerie.
Hello, my name is Valerie Toodle, and I am running for Marysville City Council. I've been married for twenty-six years to my husband, and we have six kids, nine grandchildren. Love living in the area, my children did attend Kaidon when they were younger. My grandchildren actually attend Co-Log now. We own a D business in Marysville, I own Toodle's Custom Cutting Butcher Shop. We've been there for about three and a half years now. Previously, we were in Wheatland. My husband's been in the area, being a local butcher, servicing everybody for over twenty years. We love the area. Being on the council is very important to us, having a business here is very important to us. I wanna be able to make positive changes in the community. I want our citizens to be able to walk down the street and have it be exciting and safe. I want our parents and their children to enjoy our parks. I think we need to be able to take back our parks and our recreation areas, bring them up to par, and allow them to be enjoyable. I want the tourists that come into this city, there's two highways that run into this city, and I want people to stop, they need a reason to stop. And having a business here, we need to give them those reasons to stop. I want to take the divide out of the city and the businesses and the residents. That's extremely important, and I believe that me being on that council will help take that divide out of there. I walk the D Street twice a week, every week, talking to the businesses and finding out what it is that they need to make the changes in the city. And I believe that I can help do that for Marysville. And I think we need to make Marysville strong and resilient again, and I believe it can be done.
Thank you, and that is the end of the introductions. So right now, we're gonna take a break, and we're going to ask you to fill out some cards for some questions, and then it's gonna be about five minutes, Mr. Timer.
To start off, I'm gonna clarify some of the things that Bill did in his introduction. It's my understanding that the California League of Cities is having a convention, the fifth through the seventh, and you two have applied to go, and you're gonna go and represent Marysville, and that's fine. It's also my understanding that Long Beach, not Long Beach, the city of San Jose submitted a resolution, and it's the only resolution that's gonna be addressed by the League of Cities. Start with you, Mayor, do you support that resolution?
It's gonna be quick here, because Chris called me today and said, "Hey, you know, let's meet in Long Beach over there, you know, because when we go there, we'll try to split off and go to different workshops, kinda learn from each other, different cities are going." And he talked, he asked me about what I thought about the resolution we're voting on. I'm actually the delegate who votes on behalf of the city of Marysville. And I said, "You know what, I haven't read it yet." So unfortunately, I apologize, I haven't read it yet.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, and we'll get your time here, but can we state what the resolution is? We don't have any idea what the resolution is, Mr. Verga.
I read it, I know what it is. Who's talking?
I am, moderator.
Oh, okay. Well, I assumed that the candidates running for city council in there knew it, because it's on the agenda for the next meeting.
And on Friday, so on Friday lunch, we're supposed to be voting on it. And actually, tomorrow, we'll bring it up to the council to talk about it, and hear what the other councils have to say about it. So it's a consensus more than anything else what the city's position is gonna be on.
To give you kind of an idea what's on it in the next couple of questions. Chris, could you tell me how many traffic deaths there were last year in the city of Marysville?
I'm not going to guess at the answer. I will very honestly say, I am not certain of the number of traffic deaths off the top of my head. I'm not going to make a statement that I do or don't know, but I really don't remember, to be very honest with you. I'm going to say, I'm gonna stretch my memory, and I'm going to say twelve.
Okay. Because one of the main emphasis of Vision Zero is the elimination, total elimination of traffic deaths within the city. Do either one of you have an estimate, if this resolution passed and was adopted by Marysville, what the cost would be, annual cost?
It's just something that the League of Cities is taking on to get a consensus from its members on whether or not they agree or disagree with the proposal. But that's all it is, you know, cities themselves, they don't have to apply whatever, you know, the issue is.
Yeah, I understood that the resolution stated that, to some extent, there's a lot of different things and options and variations that they would implement. Let me ask Stephanie. Stephanie, do you support the installation of speed cameras in the city of Marysville?
No, I wasn't in favor of that.
Not red light cameras, I'm talking about speed cameras.
Speed cameras, oh, thank you. If it can help law enforcement enforce the speed limits, so there wouldn't be as many traffic deaths, I think that would be a good thing. I don't know what the, I don't know the details of all the setup of that, I don't know the details. I would have to know more about it to be able to give an intelligent answer about that, but if it could help, help create safer, safer conditions, then possibly.
Okay, thank you. Charles, do you support replacing vehicle lanes with bike lanes?
In areas where it's feasible, I do, but there are a lot of areas around town where the streets are kind of narrow, and you would have to eliminate a lot of residential parking in some of those areas. Though it'd be on an area-by-area basis, but I would, I would like to see some more bike lanes around town.
Okay. And my last question would be to David. Do you feel that people avoid Marysville because of the traffic cameras and increased sales tax?
Well, that's what they say. You read the letters to the editor, the appeal Democrat, people write in and say, "I'm not going to Marysville anymore because of the speed cameras." I don't really know. But about the increase in sales tax, I definitely think it's gonna drive businesses, it might not drive a business out of Marysville, but it certainly would be a consideration for a business wanting to locate someplace and thinking maybe they would locate in Marysville. If I was a business, I wouldn't wanna locate in a place with the highest sales tax around, and then hope I could get people in anyways, so, yeah, I think that's a bad thing.
Mr. Mayor?
Well, we don't have any speed cameras in the city of Marysville, so just let me clear up. And our traffic cameras have been turned off, and are waiting to be taken down by Reflex, the company. Just wanna make sure people understood that they're no longer working, and they should be taken down as soon as possible.
Daniel, your last question, Phil.
Okay, my first question is gonna be for, let's see, Chris. What is your position on medical marijuana grows in dispensaries in Marysville?
As most people know, I voted for the dispensaries. And the best place is in the areas zoned where they are, and they should be taxed, and we have a tax measure on the ballot in November, Measure F, and they need to be regulated. And that is the best way to handle the entire situation with dispensaries and medical marijuana. Should be regulated, and contained in areas where they fit the best, and we have done that in the city of Marysville.
Could I respond to that?
Sure.
Chris makes it sound like, once we regulate it, then all the problems are gonna go away, but marijuana people never obey the law, so no matter what the law is, they're gonna break it. And this will just encourage more in there and more law board.
Thank you.
Since you mentioned me, my name, you know, I don't think it's fair that you stereotype people as lawbreakers. There are people that use medical marijuana, they're not lawbreakers, and I understand there are crime associated with them, and I realize that, but that's why they have a safety plan, and that's why they do a great job of making sure that it's regulated. So I think stereotyping is a bit much.
Thirty seconds to respond.
Well, regulating marijuana, I think, is a misnomer. I've been following this, and here in the local area, and the county, Yuba County, tried to work with the marijuana people and give them an ordinance that would please both sides, but the marijuana, pro-marijuana people showed no interest in following what they were supposed to do. They just went ahead and broke the law like they'd always done.
Thank you. Next question.
Next question is for everybody, Ricky will start with you. What is your position on the recent increase of local sales tax to reduce city budget deficits?
Well, as you know, as you may know, I was in favor of Measure W. I took a leadership role on running that campaign, and I also was for Measure C, and I took another leadership role on that. When I became city council member in 2010, the initial budget that I was shown, in my mind, had a lot of structural issues. The revenues did not support the services needed for our community to keep our streets safe, to ensure that law enforcement was well-funded, the firefighters had enough dollars to respond to emergencies. And that was in 2010, and I did at that time propose a half a cent of sales tax. I was, the rest of the council members did not agree on it, and that was one of the main reasons I ran for mayor, because I felt that we needed additional revenue for the city of Marysville to assure that we take care of public safety issues.
Measure C, and I believe it helped shore up our city's finances, and by watching that money and spending it wisely, we can start investing in our city, in our infrastructure, in our roads. And I'm not gonna stand up here and promise you that the roads will be paved with all of the Measure C money in the next two years, because it's not going to happen. It's a slow, steady progress. But part of managing that Measure C money is looking at all aspects, the way that the city runs, the way we maintain our parks, the way we run all of our programs. And that's a good way, as a council member and as a mayor, that I can help lead the city in the future, is watching that money, watching it wisely, and making sure the citizens see results.
Thank you, Stephanie.
I don't support the sales tax increase, I don't support that. I think we wanted to raise a million dollars over the next ten years, but actually, what we could have been doing for a lot of years is subcontracting our police services with the sheriff's department, we could save a million dollars every year. Not over ten years, and things could happen quickly. And so I think we could look at some other things besides tax increases to help our city prosper without adding extra burden to businesses and to the taxpayers, people who would like to shop here but could get a better deal somewhere else.
Thank you, Charles.
At first, I didn't support it, but then, once I read exactly where the money was going, the safeguards that were put in place to make sure that we were being protected and safe, and our infrastructure was going to be fixed, I did support it then. But the thing is, you gotta remember about it, this is not a full-time fix. This is a Band-Aid until we can get the business back, because business is what drives Marysville. That's the bottom line, it always has, it always will. You can't put everything on the taxpayers, we have to get the business back. And, you know, the Measure C money is a good little buffer zone until we can get the proper streamlining done, and get the business and the tourists coming back to Marysville.
Thank you, David.
I agree with Charles, it's a Band-Aid, and, yeah, there's safeguards in place, but to me, it was very instructive that after it passed, the very first budget that came from the city manager had a twenty-eight thousand dollar increase in his own salary. And other top members of the city, now, to their credit, the council voted it down. I was very proud that they did. But the bottom line is, you can't tax a city into prosperity, it doesn't work that way. You get more money upfront, but then you drive businesses out, or businesses don't come there because of the tax. So in the long run, you're gonna lose money.
Thank you, and Valerie?
When we were first told about this tax increase, my husband and I talked about it for our business, and I was against it. I did, however, understand why we needed it, it was a need. I think most of the citizens, and a lot of them are our customers, we spoke over the time before the vote, and they understood why we needed this tax increase, and I agree that it is a Band-Aid. I think that it should have been allocated. Nobody was against this tax increase unless, except for being allocated, which would have been a lot better than just going into a general fund where it could be spent frivolously, that's the problem. And I agree that we need more business in there, and there is a way to do that, the increase is there. The increase is there. We need to work with it, and we need to make sure that that money is budgeted correctly.
Thank you. And this question is for you again, Valerie. What are your thoughts on having a police chief, city manager, as one position?
Right off the top of my head, I don't think it's a great idea. I think it's too much for one person to handle all of that responsibility. I think things will get missed. I just don't think it's a great idea. I think we need to keep those separate. The police chief needs to be focused on our safety, on his police officers, on the crime at hand, which we really need to focus on. And the manager needs to work on the city. And we need to have a great manager who can manage the city and keep us on budget, keep us on task, keep the Marysville city moving forward, and close that divide between the businesses, the residents, and the city.
Thank you. And Chris, this question is for you. In your opening speech, you said that the city of Marysville has turned around and that you've made accomplishments. What is your biggest accomplishment in the four years that you've been a councilperson?
Made two very big contributions. The opening of Riverfront Park. It was a red tape nightmare with the state. It took hours of time talking with the Army Corps of Engineers. It was one of the biggest public works projects, private-public partnerships, in the city of Marysville. And also, I believe that one of the other biggest things I helped accomplish, there was a situation in a park where the density of the park wasn't deep enough. And we worked diligently to save the city $10,000 to help alleviate that problem with the donation from the California Water Company to help reach the gap, and we made our park safer.
Thank you. This question I'll give to Ricky and also Christopher. The question for Marysville City Council, okay, this is a question by the people in the audience. It says, "There were numerous rumors about deals being made over who might be issued a marijuana dispensary license even before the first public hearing on the ordinance was held. What did David Lonza, owner of the Cargill Building, mean when he stated at a recent planning commission rezoning meeting, 'I thought we had a deal'?"
You might want to ask David directly. The process to put in place the ordinance related to allowing dispensaries into the city of Marysville was put together by a lot of input from a lot of sources. Once that process was put in place, to tell the truth, I stayed away as far away from it just because allow staff to, you know, make the decision and make their presentation to the council once the decision has been made.
So you're not aware of any deals made with Mr. Lonza and the city?
There's no deals.
Okay, Christopher, same question.
I was not at the planning commission meeting. I have heard these rumors. And I believe that the staff is doing the best job they can. The staff is doing the best job they can. The process needs to be followed. It was set up by the company and by the staff. And I will say this, that planning commission meeting that they're referencing in their question was a zoning change. That zoning change was denied by the planning commission on a 7-0 vote. The people that applied for the dispensary need to follow the rules as they were set down, and I believe they're doing that now. And that's the way the process has worked. You don't get to change the rules after the game has started. And I believe that's been stopped.
Okay, thank you.
I offer rebuttal to that. The reason that there was a zoning question and that it went before the zoning, the planning commission, was because David, from my understanding, was promised that he could use the Cargill Building for raising marijuana. And so he applied and spent the thousands of dollars. And then he said, "Well, we made a mistake. It's not zoned correctly." And so he had to take it before the planning commission, and they turned it down.
Okay, thank you. This question is for Stephanie. What does Marysville have to offer, and why would anyone want to live there?
To offer and why would anyone want to live there? I think it has a lot to offer. I remember driving through there as a child. My grandparents lived up in Quincy and up in Highway 70 up there. And I used to drive through at night and see the fountain and the lights on at the lake, and I loved it. It was beautiful. And at that time, the city, I think, was really thriving. And although I didn't live here at the time, I moved here in about 1981, '82. And at that time, downtown was busy, there were good things going on. I think our city has so much historic charm. Lots of people come down. I live on D Street. People come and look at the Forbes House all the time. People are coming to see an old historic town for its charm. There's downtown, it's cute, we have lots of nice parks, we've got the ball field, we've got the river. We have lots and lots and lots of things to offer to people. And I think that we can just keep improving and expanding on those things and inviting more things to come. And we have the concert area.
Thank you. This question is for Valerie. What can be done to clean up the water in Ellis Lake and the general condition at Riverfront Park? And why has it not been done thus far?
I can answer the latter part of your question, is why? Why? I don't know why. I'd like to find that out.
Do we have all lights off?
Is that better? Okay, sorry. As for the condition of the water, I understand that it has to do with having the filters turned off.
I understand that it has to do with having the filters turned off. It also has to do with not keeping the lake clean like it should. A lot of us, our shop, for one, has put together, cleaning up Marysville Lake. We have a lot of people that do that almost every week, and there's something out there cleaning up the lake. One of the areas that I want to work on as a council member is to find out what is going on with the parks and recreation. Why aren't they taking care of our parks and recreation? When can we get the water on? When can we get the filters going? This thing with Riverfront Park, this is part of the spending of the Measure C money that I would like to, if we need to, we don't have enough help, then we hire outside help to keep it clean, because our kids play down there. Our people want to be down there. We're holding programs down there, and it needs to be taken care of all the time. And this will be a draw for our tourists that come in to see the lake in this condition.
Okay, this question is for Mayor Rick. How come Riverfront Park is in such disarray and filthy looking?
It's deferred maintenance. It hasn't been taken care of for a long time. And that's the reality. Since 2008, when the economy turned and we were in a recession, all cities suffered. All of our streets, all of our parks suffered. We continue having crumbling streets. And it's just deferred maintenance. And the more we defer it, the higher the costs are going to be associated with trying to fix them. There's tons of opportunity. There's grants. We have an amazing river. We have a softball. We lease the soccer team, the motorcycle track. Maybe through the private sector, maybe working through maybe Yuba City Recreational Department, and finding if they're interested in maybe using it for some of the recreational opportunities. We have to find funding to bring it back. It's going to cost a lot of money because it's been deferred for a long time.
Okay, thank you. This is for David Hobbs. And this is my last question. In your own words, can you describe the duties of a Marysville police officer?
A Marysville police officer?
What are the duties of a Marysville police officer?
Or are they different from any other police officer? I don't understand. Well, police officers are supposed to keep the peace. They're supposed to apprehend lawbreakers and maintain the peace in the city. And they're supposed to investigate crimes that are committed within their jurisdiction. That's what they're supposed to do. The Marysville Police Department is very underfunded, and they'll tell you that. And the tax increase was supposed to go to them, but there's no way that we could ever fund them enough out of such a small city to do what they need to do. And so our proposal is, we seriously look at combining them with the county, the sheriff's department. That's all for them.
The next question is for Charles Knott. What's the purpose of government?
The real purpose?
The real purpose?
The real purpose is to make sure that citizens are getting a fair shake, everything stays cohesive, there's a certain line that everybody kind of has to follow as far as your laws. And it's basically to oversee what they are in charge of, you know, your communities. For instance, I'm running for city council, and city council, the job is to oversee the wishes of its citizens in their best interest.
Okay, Stephanie, same question. What's the purpose of government?
The purpose of government, according to our constitution, is to provide for the common defense. So it's to protect, to provide for an army, or a police force, or some kind of army to protect us.
Valerie? Purpose of government?
I agree with both of you guys. I think the purpose of government is to govern the wishes of the people that put you in place. They were, you were put in that spot because those people agreed that you were to lead them, uphold the rights of the people, which I believe that, you know, I would do if I was voted into the city. It's not about babysitting everybody and making sure that they're abiding by the law. It's actually being in there and listening to what the city needs and conveying that into the government. And I believe that's what the real government should be, is doing what the citizens want, what needs to be done, in a truthful, transparent, common sense manner. That's what I believe.
Thank you. David Hobbs. What is sustainable development, and what's your position on sustainable development?
Well, my position on sustainable development is that it's good. But there hasn't been any development to speak of in Marysville for years. The only buildings that have been built in Marysville are for the government, like Caltrans has built a bunch of buildings, or nonprofits. Right out, Hospital is built, you know, we know about that. Where's the new businesses that have been built in Marysville? There aren't any. In how many years? And yet, we have a building inspector that we pay, I've heard, $90,000 a year, and there's nothing for him to inspect. There's no building going on. And that's something that needs to be addressed. Why isn't there any building going on? Why are the businesses going elsewhere and not coming to Marysville? I think there's reasons for it, and I think they can be addressed.
Thank you. This is for both mayoral candidates. Have you accepted any campaign contributions from unions, Chris? Why not?
Could you repeat your answer to the microphone?
The answer is no, I haven't. I am not anti-union, but I've not accepted any contributions from them.
And Ricky? Your same question. Thank you.
Wait, wait, I'm sorry. No, I received the endorsement from the Marysville Police Officer Association, but they didn't give me any money.
Okay. But you did get an endorsement. Okay. Stephanie?
Sir in Marysville?
Would be the police chief in Marysville. Right? He's got the jurisdiction there.
Charles, ultimate law enforcement authority in Marysville?
The ultimate law enforcement authority in Marysville, according to the constitution, is the county sheriff. He supersedes everybody in the county, the state. If a government comes in, Sheriff Durber can run right back out.
Thank you. I have one for Ricky, and it's a serious one. Would you support withdrawing from SACOG and forming a new council of governments with a few of the surrounding rural counties and cities? Explain.
Brought up before with Buick County and Yuma and Sutter Counties. You know, SACOG for us is a great opportunity, not only because of the region that it, you know, we are, in a sense, tied to Sacramento a lot closer than we are to Chico because of the jobs in recreation and shopping or entertainment, whatever we may be doing. And a lot of the traffic back and forth is, and transportation needs are from in that area. So I believe we actually benefit a lot more because of the size that they are, the information that they have, the capacity that they have than going to a smaller organization like Buick County CAG.
Thank you. Chris, same question.
I agree with the mayor. SACOG has helped the city a lot. We've got some planning grants to make the city safer in the future. And I think we should continue on with the current organization we have now.
Thank you. Still have your microphone.
Question for Stephanie. How would you propose to increase citizen attendance at the city council meetings? Question for Stephanie. How would you propose to increase citizen attendance at the city council meetings? How would you propose to increase citizen attendance at the city council meetings?
I think that you could post in the paper something about what might be going on. Make it, I know it's announced that the meetings are stated in the paper, I think, but probably just to be a little more local in the community about what's happening to the council. We'd like to come and have you come and give your input. This is what we're going to be talking about. We'd like to hear from you and put it out in the paper, have it on the radio. Do some things like that, maybe even have a Facebook page where you could have some give and take in the community that way.
Thank you. David Hobbs, same question.
I don't, as a city councilman, I would not see it as my primary responsibility to get a lot of people into the council chambers to watch me counsel away. If they want to come, they can come. We should make things known. I think they're being made known now, but if people don't want to come, then there's a great apathy in the population. So that's not one of the issues I'm going to be trying to address, is the apathy in the population. I don't think that's the councilman's job to do. We've got problems in the city that need to be addressed, and that's where I would focus my energy.
Thank you. Valerie, we'll give you this question. This one's from the audience. What do you believe is the best way to get businesses to stay in Marysville? How will you help? What plan will you put in place?
I think the best way to bring business to Marysville is to stop tearing it down on the front page of the paper. I think all the negativity that goes on and all the whispering and the rumors need to be stopped. A lot of it isn't true. I will tell you that when my husband and I opened up Toodles and we decided to come to Marysville, we were pleasantly surprised. I will also tell you that we walked the neighborhood with another member of UVA County who was helping us come here, and the city workers were telling us how awful it was and how horrible it was. And I was just a freaking mess. But by the time we got it all done, it was so easy. Those things have to be put out there and let the businesses know that it's not as detrimental and horrible as you think it is. This needs to be put out there. We need wins on the front page of the paper. We need to build up our city on the front page of the paper, not tear it down. That's how we will get the businesses into the city, and that's how we'll get tourists, and how we will make everybody stay and come back.
This is another question from the audience. I suppose we'll ask everybody. Ricky, we'll start with you. How do you stand on Governor Brown's new gun laws?
I have a couple mentions that I want to discuss with Mr. Hobbs. One, the increase in the budget that was shown by the city manager was not an increase in their salary. What it was, it was an elimination of the furlough, so I just want to clear that up. And I was interested to hear from Mr. Hobbs that it's not up to him to get people into our council. It is our role to assure that the public understands what's going on, and that we get input from the public to assure we understand what their will is. When it comes to Brown's laws, he just signed about six laws out of eleven that were signed not too long ago. Here's what I'm worried about when it comes to guns. I believe in the Second Amendment, but I do believe that we need to do figure something out on how to take guns out of young kids out there in our neighborhoods. That's what I'm worried about. I'm worried because our police department is worried about, and they have to deal with these young kids hanging out with guns. I wish I could figure out a way that we can come together to figure out how do we solve that issue. But the Second Amendment and folks' rights to have a gun should always be protected.
Could I respond to what the mayor said because he mentioned my name? I totally agree that we should get the word out and invite public input. We need to know what the public thinks, but as far as just getting people out to fill up the chairs, I don't think that's our job. Let them come if they want to. Let them come if they have something to say. I want to hear what it is.
Thank you.
I actually signed the petitions to overturn Governor Brown's gun laws. I'm also concerned about public safety and guns and the children having them. And I will address the issue of having people at council meetings. I proposed several years ago changing the meeting time to six o'clock to make it easier for people to come to the council meetings. And we voted, and we passed it, and we've since renewed that. I think as a council member, if you're out there in the community talking and working, then you can tell the people that our meeting is at six o'clock. And that's something you should do. You want the people to come to the meetings. And you give them the choice, and then they get to make that choice.
Thank you, Stephanie.
I disagree with any law that would take away a citizen's right to own a gun, and so I disagree with most of them. I think that we all should have that, maintain that right to protect ourselves and the need to be able to protect ourselves. And I think if its citizenry is disarmed, then we will be taken advantage of. So I think we need our guns.
Thank you. Charles?
I'm very against what Governor Brown tried to do to our Second Amendment rights. You know, some of you may not know me, but my family's been here for three hundred and eighty-one years. We fought through the revolution and every war since then for our gun rights. And what Governor Brown and his little henchmen are doing is so wrong. It's not a gun problem we have in this country. It's a morals issue. And once we get, once we convince the people to think the right way, you know, that's going to be the difference. I look back when I was a kid. We watched cartoons, Bugs Bunny, Elmer Fudd. You know, He's Somebody Sam, these guys are shooting everything in the world. We never ran outside and shot our teachers. We had morals. We were taught properly back then.
Thank you. David?
I totally agree with Charles on that. It's a moral problem that we have. And the ruling elites in this country don't want to deal with the moral problems. In fact, they continually make them worse. But they have an agenda which is trying to take the guns away from the people so that the people will be easier to control. So they won't have to be afraid of the people rising up against what they're trying to do. And so I don't even have to know what these six gun laws are. All you have to say is gun laws, Governor Brown, I'm against it.
I am against it as well. I believe that we should all have a right to bear arms. We need to protect ourselves. I agree, it is a morals issue. The problem that we have is in this day and age is we have babies raising babies. We have people that walk away. We have a divide in our city, in our citizens. This is where inviting the citizens to come, this is where our wins matter. This is where our citizens need to see that their voices matter. And when a community comes together, it begins to teach these babies raising babies what those morals are, the correct, the truth, what it should be. And I believe that once that is started, I think it will all roll together. And it starts in your community. It takes a village to raise a child. And my village is Marysville, and I believe that's exactly what we need to do.
Okay, this question is for Stephanie. Who stands to profit from city sanctioned marijuana sales in Marysville?
People. Not the people. Not at all. Not our children, not our neighborhoods, not our law enforcement, whoever is the private citizen, whoever the people are who are the drug dealers that are profiting from it. Drugs and crime are going to profit from that. It's not going to be any of us. I don't know how much would come to the city from that, but I think we could do better in choosing revenue sources than having a marijuana dispensary.
Thank you. This question is for Mr. Hobbs. What services should a city provide to the public? It's a two-part question. And have you thought about privatizing some of these services?
Well, the city should provide services for the common good. Like they should take care of the roads, and they should provide a level playing field for the businesses so that they all have an equal chance to do well. I think we should privatize some of the services. Like I mentioned earlier about the inspector, goes around, the building inspector. For instance, we could hire a contract person that had the experience, maybe was retired. So when there's a need, when there is some building going on, we could bring somebody in to do it. But then we wouldn't have to just pay ninety thousand dollars a year for somebody to sit around in an office waiting for something to be built.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Okay, this question will be for Charles. Recently, myself personally, I drove through Marysville after coming back from Oregon at three o'clock in the morning and was surprised by all the tweakers I encountered running around that alley. Okay, five or six on foot and on bicycles. Evidently, the war on drugs is not working well in Marysville. Any ideas on how to deal with this problem?
That's a great question. You're preaching to a choir. I live right across the street from Motor Park, and before the railroad built the fence, we had hot and cold running tweakers go by our house every day. Part of it is, some of the people that are inhabiting the city are tweakers, but we have a lot of people coming from outside the city and lend up all over to UVA City. People come from all around and kind of blend into the scenery. What we need to do is enforce this, you know, check these people out. The police come through, they see somebody out there, they need to stop them. Find out what they're doing, just out there roaming around looking crazy at three o'clock in the morning. It's a matter of public safety, you know. These people have to be told and let know, hey, you can't just go tweaking around in Marysville in the middle of the night. One of these nights, somebody's going to tweak into the wrong yard and get shot. That's what ended up happening.
Okay, thank you. And Stephanie, I got the same question for you. Want me to repeat it?
The kids running around in the middle of the night?
Not kids, tweakers.
Tweakers. Tweakers. Well, we have policemen out there in the streets, right? You know what? I think that's, yeah, we have people, if there's law enforcement patrolling, they can stop those people and check them out, see what they're doing. If they're causing mischief, if they're high, we'll send them to the right place and take care of them.
Okay, thank you. And this question is for Mr. Mayor Ricky. Okay. It seems to me that the city of Marysville has embraced the idea of becoming drug dealers. Is there anything the city will not do to generate revenue? Is prostitution on the table as another revenue stream that the city could regulate and oversee? Tax, maybe?
She's asked me this before. The voters of California voted to legalize medical marijuana. The legislation passed laws last year to regulate it. The city of Marysville is within those parameters.
Next question?
Okay, yeah, and this will be for both the mayoral candidates. What do you see as the main problem facing Marysville city government? And what do you plan to do to address the problem? Start with Ricky.
Question. Streets, huge problem. Our police department, our public safety, our firefighters being underfunded, huge problem. And recreation opportunities is a huge problem. Those are the three things that I'm going to be focusing on if elected as mayor. We need to, there's four hundred and twenty ballot measures out in the state of California from different cities and different counties and school districts. Bottom line, the state, the feds, aren't rescuing our localities. They're not helping us with those big cost items like streets, and it costs a lot of money. And as a city and as a community, we have to kind of come together and figure out what the best way is to build that. Measure C is going to allow us to maintain some of the service levels, but I believe we need to figure out a way to strengthen our current police department and our current fire department. And recreation opportunities, I look forward to building our recreational facility for seniors and for youth and people of all ages in the city of Marysville.
Chris, same question. You want me to repeat it?
Public safety is a big priority. It's the number one goal of government, to protect the citizens. Roads, yes, we know the streets of Marysville are in sad, sad shape. So it's a priority too. But ultimately, the thing that's going to drive Marysville is economic development. And I'll be rolling out my twenty-one day plan to make sure those businesses open in the city of Marysville. It is done in the quickest, most possible streamlined way that we can. Yes, there will be some businesses that can't open in twenty-one days. We've got to do our very best to make sure. And then a fee deferral program for homeowners and for business owners so that they can move some of the city fees back six months to a year to help get their business going. Some people say three hundred dollars in fees is a small amount, but if you're opening a small business, three hundred dollars may be the difference between your first week's inventory.
This question is for Stephanie and Charles. Do you believe city council members and city employees should be involved in negotiating their own salary and benefits? Should negotiations be behind closed doors?
My understanding is that the city council members get about two hundred and fifty dollars a month, maybe two hundred and fifty-five?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six. So they're not working for the money. It's a service, it's a public service position. And I think that they actually did reduce it at one point. And I don't know who made the decision to do that, but no, I don't think that government employees should negotiate their own salaries.
I'm in the same boat. An employee shouldn't be down there trying to, you know, argue for his own salary. You should have a third-party neutral arbitrator in there working with the city. Or if you're a union member, your union reps should be down there speaking for you, just the same as you. the same as your city council is down there in the council chamber speaking for the citizens that they represent.
And for David and Valerie, what one ordinance or policy would you change to bring more jobs to the area?
Well, that's a good question. And there are a lot of small things that could be done that wouldn't cost anything. I don't know about one ordinance, but if we could relax the signage requirements a little bit, so at least the signs is up there now would be acceptable for a new business coming in, at least for like six months. That would be one thing. Speeding up the approval process that you have to go through with the city to get things approved so you can open up. Now it's just, you just wait and wait and wait. Compliance issues that don't affect safety could be relaxed. It wouldn't cost the city anything if they were just more efficient and friendly and willing to work with people that wanted to put a business in the city. I don't, it blows my mind why they don't do that.
Thank you. Valerie?
Just repeat the question.
What one ordinance or policy would you change to bring more jobs to the area?
I don't know about the ordinances or the policies, but in order to bring those jobs, we have to bring in more businesses. The twenty-one day program that Chris had implemented that I'd heard about is excellent. Like I said, I haven't had, we did not have a problem bringing a business into the city. There are some that have, and it's because of certain things that need to be done. I also think that people like to clamor for jobs in a city that is great to live in, great to work in, and looks great. People want to spend time there. They go out of their way to find jobs in those particular small towns and small cities because they like, they like the way it looks, they like the way it runs. I think that needs to change within the city itself. Being a lot more friendly would definitely help out. Bringing more people into the city and getting the businesses in here will definitely increase the jobs.
Okay, I got one more question. This is for the mayor, for me, the troublemaker. Years ago, a business got a business license in the city they operated from. Now, every city that you go into to do work is requiring you to get a business license to do a job in that city, and I'm referring to contractors. As contractors, a lot of us feel like this is a form of extortion. What are your thoughts?
I can't say that I'm familiar with that because I'm not a contractor, but I believe that that's probably true. So I would have to find out a little bit more about it. If they have to register to know that that person is a qualified and bonded individual who's gonna do the construction or development, there has to be some communication just because of public safety issues, public health and safety codes that they have to meet to ensure that. But it doesn't make any sense to me that you have to actually pay money to do business in that city. So to me, it doesn't make any sense. So I believe that what you were saying is true, and it doesn't make any sense. And so I would love to look more into that.
Thank you. I think at this point, I'm gonna turn it back over to the moderator so we can have time for your closing statements. Paul?
Thank you, Larry. And I'd like to say thank you again to our candidates. It's been really, I think it's been a very enlightening experience. So ladies and gentlemen, just give them a round of applause. I also want to say that good governance is critical, obviously, to a free society. And I really do appreciate the fact you came out here. There's a lot of issues going on. You're transparent. I don't think anybody was saying you're hiding anything. And again, I thank you for that as well. Okay, this is the after-closing statement. So we are gonna have your closing statements now. And we're gonna go from left to right that way, the anatomical position way. And we're gonna start down at the end. So Valerie, two minutes.
Well, I'd just like to thank each and every one of you for coming out tonight and express my appreciation to the Sutter Duce Tea Party for sponsoring tonight's gathering. Marysville is a great place to live and work. It's a place where integrity, personal responsibility, family values have been respected and are encouraged. There's a lot of changes that need to be made. And my running for this council position is to make a lot of those changes, to make our city a family-friendly, business-oriented community greater than it is now. It's to work on making it safer. It's to be a part of a community that people want to be a part of, that we are proud to be a part of. It's not a fight. We love Marysville. We plan to be here a very long time, and I wanna live in a community a lot like that. So I really appreciate your vote on November eighth, and thank you again for having me.
Well, I too, and thank you. Audio, there it is. I wanna cut to the chase. You've heard all kinds of platitudes here tonight about what we wanna do, what needs to be done. You hear the same thing every two years, and then when there's another election, you hear the same thing, and then the same thing two years after that. But nothing ever seems to change. So let's get real. It's just, there's platitudes, but what's gonna change? Is the city gonna be better in two years, or is it just gonna be the same, or people out there saying, well, we need to do this, we need to do that? We have the turnaround team, Stephanie McKenzie and myself, because I was asked to run for council some years ago, but I turned it down because I thought, what good can one person do? There's five votes, one person can get in there. It's a system that you're up against. You're bucking this system. It's not just the council, it's the people that run Marysville. And so I turned it down. At this time, we have two of us running together, and we hope to get a third person to the turnaround team, so we'll have three votes, we can actually get something done. And that's, strategy is what's gonna make the difference, not the platitudes. Everybody knows platitudes. But we have the strategy that's never been done before, and we're gonna use a strategic plan. We're actually going to plan what we're gonna do, what needs to be done, how to get there. Marysville doesn't have a strategic plan. They just go from budget to budget, and it doesn't work. It hasn't worked, it's not going to work. It's gonna continue. In two years, we're back in the same place. But the turnaround team can make a difference.
I wanna thank the Sutter Duce Tea Party for having us all here tonight. It's the second time I've been here. You guys always treat us very well. Marysville is a great place. It's gotten dirty over the years. Businesses are gone. We need to streamline our business approach. Get the businesses back, get the city cleaned up, get the people involved. That's the biggest thing. If you can get your citizens involved in something, and get them truly believing, this is what we need to do, and show them which way you're gonna go with it, and be totally transparent about your point, you know? We can do something in Marysville. It's a matter of getting the people behind us and getting the, showing them the proper plan, you know? We don't need studies and surveys. Let's keep it simple. Go back to basics. Bring the business back, get the city cleaned up, bring the tourists back, take care of our parks, like where we're from, park, everybody calls the forgotten park. Well, me and my wife did three and a half years down there taking care of the forgotten park, you know? And I'm not gonna promise the citizens of Marysville, like even the world, but I wanna get in there, promptly get in there and do something to change the way people look at Marysville and the way Marysville does business. And only then we can get something going and turn Marysville back into the gem of the valley it used to be.
Yes, thank you so much for having us. And I agree, it's time. It's time for a change, and I think the climate is ripe for a change. I think people are really wanting to save our city. There's so much support for change right now. And I think it's a time when the people working together on the council to say, okay, we're gonna agree to make some bold changes, to make some tough choices that haven't been made. People, you need people on the council who will care about the people they're serving and be those watchdogs over the government. We don't wanna grow the government, we wanna strengthen the government. We want more freedoms for the people, more freedoms for businesses, more freedoms for other people that wanna come in. But we wanna protect the people. We don't wanna invite crime through marijuana dispensaries. We wanna be smart with our finances. But I think we can unify the city. I'm hearing hope and unification and people working together, and I think we can do that. I think we can rally people together who love the city, who have good ideas. It's not just one person with a good idea, but it is a team, and it is a plan that we need. And I think we can do it. And I appreciate your vote on November eighth.
Thank you, Sutter Duce Tea Party, for having us. Small citizens who came out to listen to us. My vision for the city of Marysville as your next mayor is to change the entire business climate of Marysville. You know, I've heard about the platitudes, but implementing my twenty-one day plan helps both the homeowner and the business owner. We can make this city a great place. I started coming to city council meetings, and one of the first causes I took up is the city was struggling with budgets, and they turned off the lights around the lake. I helped raise that money. So I know what it's like to fight shoulder to shoulder with the citizens. I know what it's like to sit down and work through the government rigmarole and get things done. My fee deferral program, some will say, well, how are you gonna pay for it? Well, I'm gonna let the citizens and the businesses make up their own mind. If they get six months or a year, that's gonna help them, puts money in their pocket. You can't budget on money you don't have. It's time we made the city business friendly. We need to start the engine of Marysville all over again, and that's what I'm going to do. And one of the other things I'm even gonna put on the table is a rotating mayor. I'm running for the city of Marysville for election for mayor for a four-year term. I'm gonna put on the agenda and on the ballot in 2018 the removal of that position to give more voice, all the members of the council and to the people, so they can say, look, all our leaders are leading. We need to make this work. And I'm poised and ready to lead Marysville with future, and I appreciate your vote on
Well, make sure you take my mom's recipe for sweet bread before you go home, all right, folks? I have the extra copies out here. And the other recipe is how we're gonna continue to make the city of Marysville a great city. It's interesting to hear from Chris about his twenty-one plan. He can do that right now as a council member. It's a great idea. Put it forward as a council member, and it'll probably get passed, and we can do that. So you can do that. You don't have to be a mayor to do that. And if the individuals, voters of the city of Marysville wanna go back to a rotating mayor, that's a great idea as well. And so I'm for it. If that's what the voters want, then that's what we do. Economic development is about being competitive. It's about assuring that the private sector dollars come to the city of Marysville, and they don't go to Sacramento, or they don't go to Uva City, or they don't go to South County. What makes us a competitive city to assure that we have economic private dollars coming to our city to invest, to create new jobs? That's the question. For me... Don't say something.
No, go ahead.
Oh, okay. To me, what makes an attractive place to invest is a safe town, and that's why my focus is gonna be public safety. A town that has good roads so we can transport your goods in and out, and recreational opportunities for our families and seniors. I'm gonna build a community center. We're working through it. And those are my things that I wanna do if elected again for mayor. Thank you, everyone.